Notice is hereby given that the City Council Committee on Orange's Licenses and Legal Affairs will hold a committee meeting on Thursday, February 17th at 6:00 PM via remote participation. Sorry, in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, for the purposes of taking action on the matters listed below, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and/or parties with a right under requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through the following, any one of the following ways. Please click on the link posted in the agenda to join the meeting or go to the website link, https://zoom.us/join and enter webinar ID number 86189049393, followed by the meeting password if necessary. By telephone, participants can dial a toll-free phone number at 888-475-4499 to join the meeting when prompted. Enter the webinar ID noted below. City Council Committee on Orange's Licenses and Legal Affairs met remotely February 17th at 6:00 PM for the purposes of discussing claims. Absent are Counselor Dominguez. In attendance are all the other members of Orange's Licenses and Legal Affairs. Also in attendance is the city solicitor, Beth Bernard. Thank you. So that was always fun. So I guess if you wanted to get back into that conversation, I think it would be helpful too for the new counselors and also myself, who did not serve on Ola last year, as to what the process is and how these end up is to, what has already happened, I guess, before they get to us for discussion? And then if you want to best just kind of jump into the list that we have, that would be great.
Okay. So if someone hits a pothole, they may call City Hall and they're told to file a claim. So they file a claim and it gets sent to the city clerk's office. When you file a claim for a road defect, that's a road or a sidewalk, those claims by state statute have to be filed within 30 days of the incident. So that claim gets filed and let's say it's a pothole claim. They'll send that off, the city clerk will send that, in my office, will send that off to our insurance company. And the insurance company will investigate it. And the way they investigate all claims is they will send a claim form to the department. So in this case for pothole, they'll send it to Ray Joden and ask certain questions. And one of those questions, the key question is, did you have notice of this defect? And in the case law relative to road defect claims, they have to file within 30 days and they have to have, the municipality has to have had notice of the defect. And notice means that within most cases, for at least 48 hours in which to fix the pothole. So if you saw a pothole on your street and you called DPW and five days later, nothing was done and your neighbor went over that pothole and, you know, damaged their tire. That neighbor could argue, well, the city had noticed of that defect. They had a week to fix it and so therefore they're liable. And in those cases, that doesn't happen very often. But in those cases, the insurance come to pay the claim. So those are typical ones that we have at this time of year are road defect claims. The other types of claims that we have this time of year are toes. And it's people that for whatever reason didn't move their car and got towed. Sometimes the police make a mistake and we refund. Sometimes they're out of town and they just left their car there. And we, you know, that's no defense. We usually don't pay those. Other claims that we have are like sewer backup claims. Most of the time Maya will pay those. On sewer backup claims, the, what we look at is the lateral versus the main. And the lateral goes from your house to the middle of the street. The main runs down the middle of the street. If there is a clog in the main that backs up into your house, then the city will accept responsibility for it and Maya will pay it. If the DPW determines that the clog was on your lateral, we don't pay it and Maya won't pay it. So you'll see some claims like that. So those are the typical claims that we listen. Counselor Cohen?
Counselor Cohen, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was, that happened to me when I was working for the city. I had a tree go into my sewer pipe. So I found out I filed a claim that was denied. Dave Knowlton actually recommended I file. And then after having ASAP and people come out and take photographs of the pipe, realized that it was my responsibility. So I've been at least able to, as maybe some of the other people have, inform constituents that, you know, although it seems maybe illogical to some, that it is still the responsibility of the homeowner until you get to the main.
So with respect to the claims we have tonight, I have two things I could share. I could share the spreadsheet or I could share the actual claim forms themselves. What do you think would be easier?
How about the, would you be able to go back and forth with this spreadsheet? And if we need to find the documentation, I mean, okay.
All right. So I'll start with the spreadsheet and then, um. Okay. Can you see that? Okay?
Yep.
You need me to make it bigger?
I'm good. Is everyone good? Conrad, are you?
Everybody's good.
Yes, just one quick question about Beth. Beth, going back to the potholes, if somebody hits a pothole and damages their car and the city didn't know about it and there was no notice made, does that report to you become noticed? In other words, if one person hits it and then a day later, somebody else does and a day later, somebody else does, does the first, does the first claim automatically become a report? Or does the report have to be direct to the DPW? Or does it, what if they reported to the police?
It's notice to the city and the police have an obligation to notify DPW. So you'll see tonight, we have a few, if we get to them, we have a few claims on Highland Avenue. So I put the dates in there because those are important. If there were one after the other, then that's something that I would investigate further. But in this case.
A claim does not define a report.
A claim can give notice to the city that they need to do something. So if Joanne gets a claim, someone came in, they hit a pothole yesterday and they were efficient, he came in the office today. Joanne would send that claim to Ray. And if Ray didn't fix that pothole tomorrow or the next day and somebody was again, you know, their car was damaged, that would be enough notice that they would, we would be responsible for that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So the first one we have is an old one from 2020. And this was an open manhole on Franklin Street that went to Maya. It was denied because there was no notice of the defect. And I would recommend that this be denied because there was no notice of defect in this case.
Beth, I was curious on this one. Was this one reviewed last year by the committee? Because it does seem to be kind of an older one. I started to look through to see if there were any notes on why this was.
It might have been, you know, sometimes if it is a person who lives in Salem, that might have been a counselor that would have been you though. Right? Was Foster Street?
Well, that's where the incident happened. Yeah, Foster Street.
No, that's the person's address.
Oh, okay. Is it? Oh, Franklin Street is where.
Sorry, Franklin. So there might have been a case where a council might have asked that to be held. I don't recall this one though.
I have not received any info on that one.
So I'm recommending that be denied.
Counselor Presniski, do you have your hand up?
All right. I forgot to take it down. But right after Beth said that, from what I understand is that there is already case precedent has been set that if no claim has been filed, then we have, then that's our job to deny. Correct?
If no notice of defect, yes. What we typically do, Counselor Ricardi, is we typically, the council would vote on them one by one. But if you want to hold them, all the ones that I'm recommending to be denied and do them as a group, whatever the will of the body is.
Sure. Um. How about if there's a motion to vote on this one? I will take a vote if there's a motion to, I'm trying to see my screen. Sorry. Does not look like there's a motion to vote individually.
I'll make a motion that we hold these until Beth gets through the ones that are all similar.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Number 225, this is water damage from a water main break. The claimant is alleging that her sewer backup was related to the water break. And Maya did a thorough investigation with the DPW and there was no causal relationship between the water break on Highland Avenue and her sewer system. They're two separate systems. So I'm recommending that be denied. Any questions on that one?
No questions for me.
Okay. Number 405, and this is an open manhole cover caused by an underbody of water. The underbody of the vehicle to be damaged. Again, there was no notice of defect. Oftentimes, for whatever reason, a manhole will cover, will lift off. It could be from rain. It could be from a heavy truck. You'll see these every once in a while that the manhole will come off and we have no notice of defect in these because they happen so quickly. And that was, that's what happened here. So I'm recommending that be denied. Number 481 is a screw punctured the tire. There was some destruction going on on Boston Street. I'm recommending this be denied. Oftentimes constituents will get a flat tire. They'll find a screw and they will have driven by a construction site. There's no way to know whether a screw was from a particular project the city was doing or some other contractor contracting business. So I'm recommending that one be denied. The next one is a ticket in tow for sweeping on Mason Street. What I typically do is I have Joanne go down and get the ticket that was issued. So whenever there's a tow, there's a ticket. And Bonnie, the hearing officer, will review the facts with the person there at the counter. And oftentimes she finds that it was improperly towed. She will waive the ticket. In this case, that didn't happen. So when that doesn't happen, this person was heard by a hearing officer. I would recommend that that be denied. The next one is 513. This person parked on the sidewalk and her justification for parking on the sidewalk was that everybody else did it. Her ticket was upheld and she had, she paid it. And I'm recommending that we deny her claim. The next one is the Witch's Brew. Her basement flooded, was sewage due to a backup. I recommend that be denied. There was an investigation on this. It was because, as Mr. Cohen cited earlier, it was a lateral line owned by the business, which was in fact clogged. So I'm recommending that that also be denied. The next one is, this one, this claimant was driving down the street and she hit a big pothole and her, the screen on her car, you know, the screens that display on the newer cars, was damaged. There was a water break on the 9th, on the 8th of September. The defect was repaired on the 29th after this claim came in. This one, do you want me to pull up this one and take a look at it?
Yes.
Okay. Let me stop. So this is claim number 544. I gotta find it now. Let me see. Okay. You see that? Okay. All right. I was traveling towards my house at 30 Perkins Street. The city was doing work. So this happened on 9/27. The city had done some work on, earlier, as I said, it was on the 8th in the road in front of electrical pole. And this is one where the work was done on the 8th. Her damage was done on the 27th. The DPW went out after they, after we got this claim, went out and fixed it on the 29th. We didn't find, Maya denied this claim. They didn't find any notice of the defect. And the notice of would have been somebody calling to complain that the backfilling that they did after the work they did in front of this electrical pole was not sufficient. So the city did the work. Apparently wasn't sufficient. This driver had damage to her car and then the city went back and fixed it later. So this is one of those cases. This is a, she happens to be a city employee too, where there wasn't really notice of defect. Had she called three days earlier and said, hey, you need to come out and fix this? And then she or her husband or whoever had suffered this damage, you know, I would say yes, there's no, it's a defect. So that's one of those.
Could you repeat again the date? So the date of the accident was 9/27 and the date of the work was?
9/8/18. 9/8/8. Yep, 9/8. All right. So do I go back to the spreadsheet?
Please.
Okay. So that was 544. That one, just based on the, on the precedent that we have about notice of defect, I would recommend that. Unfortunately, that one would be denied. This one is a ticket in tow on Gedney Street. There was some issues with this claim that I want, I'm going to recommend it remain in committee so that I can review it with DPS. There was some information in the, in the complaint that the police were involved and knew about a problem. So I kind of want to just recommend that we leave that so that I can review that further. The next one is the same, number 581, remaining committee. Was this marked as a construction zone? So we have several claims from Mall War Road when repaving was done there. And the status of the law is that if, if there is signage that is work going on, travel at your own risk, that type of thing, that that's notice to the driver. So I need to find out what we had out there, if anything, to give warning to the drivers. So I'd like to recommend that remaining committee until I can figure that out. The next one was a ticket in tow for a street sweeping. I'm recommending that that one be denied. The next one is 611. It's a front end and undercarriage damage due to exposed bolts in the ground on New Derby Street. This is one that Maya did a great job investigating it. The person pulled up on Derby Street, opened their car door and pulled a little bit too forward and ran over one of those plates that holds a light that had been removed. So they were actually not even in the parking space when they actually went over this particular base of a fixture. So I'm recommending that one be denied.
Sorry, Beth. Could we go back to one, the tow one? I think you just said denied, but there wasn't, do you know if that ticket was upheld?
Yes. If I recommend that it's denied, the ticket was upheld. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You can see that by the dollar amount, they're looking for the ticket reimbursement as well. You can tell by the dollar amounts.
Oh, okay. Good tip.
The next one is, this is another one, a nail of an unknown origin damaged tire. Recommend that be denied. The next one is a 615, is a fixed city. So this is a person who went and had their sidewalk repaired on their own at 13 Preston. There had apparently been some damage to the sidewalk and they went out on their own and fixed it and now looking for reimbursement. There would be a situation if the DPW was aware of this and acknowledged that, go ahead and do the work. Dave Knowlton on occasion would reimburse someone for this, but not just when you do it on your own. I'm recommending that one be denied. Let's see. The next one is 645. Flat tire from exposed manhole cap on Posh the Paved Road. This is another one I'd like to remain in committee to see about signage. The next one is a tree branch that fell on a car that was parked in front of their house. There's no amount on the claim. And in this case, Maya did send out to the tree department a form asking if they had noticed the defect. And that would have been a call or a letter or an email to the, to the tree department to come and take care of a defective tree. And that didn't happen. So I'm recommending denial. No notice of defect. This is a pothole on Highland Avenue that we have a couple of these.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On trees, if a tree, we're talking about city trees, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. This is one of a few Highland Avenue. They're all different spots on Highland Avenue. Flat tires on Highland from potholes. Again, Maya did the research. There was no notice of defect, recommending that that be denied. This next one is a branch that fell on a house and damaged the gutters. And the claimant reports that the electric lines, National Grid lines, were actually burning the tree and they have pictures of it, that caused this tree to fall over onto their house. So Maya investigated it and sent a letter to this homeowner instructing them on how to get in touch with National Grid in which to file a claim because, you know, based on their negligence. And the homeowner reported that they had contacted National Grid several times about, about this problem. So I'm recommending that be denied because it was referred to National Grid. Here's another claim on Highland Avenue at a different location. I'm recommending this one be denied for a couple of reasons. No notice of defect and it was more than 30 days after the incident that it was filed. So such totally, that can be denied. We have another tire damage. This one alleged there was a tool that was in the middle of the street. They ran over it and it caused damage to the tire. We don't know where that particular tool could have fallen off a truck that just drove by. So I'm recommending that be denied. The next one is another Highland Avenue. Different dates. You can see one was December, one was November. I look at those dates just to make sure it's not the same pothole. It wasn't fixed. This again, deny, no notice of defect. We have two that Maya paid. And when we have ones that Maya paid, they just come back to you to discharge them from your committee. So there was a sewer backup that must have been in our main. Maya paid $350. And then there was another one where there was property damage to what I have of a glass storefront window, repairable window and a new door. Maya paid that, so we can discharge that. Now the rest of these are toes. I'm recommending that the first one, number 121, be denied. This person in their complaint, in their, said that they left their car on the street while they went out of country. As council process can tell you, you cannot leave your car on the street while you're going. I'm recommending that 122 remain in committee because the claimant was citing Lieutenant Tucker saying, agreeing with him that this ticket should be paid, I mean reimbursed. So I'd like that to remain so I can talk to Lieutenant Tucker. The next one, this ticket was dismissed because the person was actually parked on private property, but got ticketed and towed by mistake. So that's the only one I'm recommending that we pay. Another one cited Lieutenant Tucker, like that to remain. And the last one, the ticket was upheld after a hearing. I'm recommending that that one be denied. So that's the list that you have before you.
Thank you, Beth. That was very helpful. How, do you mind, you can stop screen sharing now because I will start screen sharing, I guess, for the vote part and discussion if needed. I say I'm going to do that, but I'm not on the ball. So I am thinking, Ola, for vote purposes, we can go through the list. And if there are any items where you may, would like more discussion or disagreement on the legal opinion, we can go from there. How does that sound? We'll just go down the list and if. Sorry, my screen's out of whack. Conrad, do you have your hand raised?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Are we going to, are we going to go? I have questions based on some of the things that, that our city solicitor said, just to, just to clarify my own mind is how the, how the process works on a few of these. Should we just go down the line and I'll wait till we get to those? Or just bring them up now?
How about we just go down the line? We'll go in order if that's okay? Okay. So the first one was the claim from 2020 for deny, no notice of defect. Any objection to the denial opinion? Or discussion needed? No? Okay. Number 225. Water damage from the water main break that Mia investigated and denied that it was not related. Any discussion or objection to the legal opinion? Or discussion on legal opinion? Are we in agreement? 405, open manhole cover caused underbody of damage. Any discussion? And I, the way my screens are right now, I can't see if you're using the raise hand feature. So feel free to scream if you need to. Okay. The screw on the tire due to construction on Boston Street. Any objection to the denial? The ticket in tow for 60 Mason Street where the ticket was upheld. Any objection to the denial? Same question, a ticket and tow for parking on sidewalk. Biggest pet peeve. Which is Brew basement flooding on Derby Street. Any objection to the denial? Okay, this next one, the computer information screen damage when the car hit a pothole after work was completed. Conrad? Counselor Presniski?
I'm just curious as why she's claiming that that damage was caused by the, by the city. If she hit a pothole and it caused damage to her vehicle, wouldn't there be other damage besides for a screen going blank? I'm just, I don't see any evidence that says that that particular incident, which didn't do any damage to any other part of her car, caused her computer screen or her visual screen to go out. Was there anything else in that?
Yes. I didn't have it scanned, but Counselor Ricardi, if you have the whole packet, I'm not sure if you have the Maya letter or her full claim. She did attach the report from the dealership. We'll shed any light on that or not.
Yes, I do. So the dealership report, that's the receipt for the work done. Customer states the display screen blank, diagnosed. Diagnostic. Tech checked all connections and confirmed the issue is the screen tech removed and replaced the screen in the dash. The screen is not working. Doesn't necessarily say the cause of the screen. It's just your standard. Like invoice from a mechanic. Upon inspection, upon inspection, the tech found the rear brake pads are worn.
And I. I just don't see. I'm sorry, I thought I had the floor. I, I just don't see any evidence saying that that was, that was our damage that caused that. Direct evidence. That's, that's, that's all, I'm okay with the denial.
Any further discussion?
My wife will tell you that every pothole that we've ever hit is my fault, so you could never file a claim.
Ticket in tow for one Gedney Court, Mr. Phelan, we will vote to remain that. Yeah, have it remain in committee?
Yes.
Same for. This next one remaining committee as we check to see if construction is on or supposed to. Okay, Ms. Meester on Warner Street, ticket in tow for street sweeping. The ticket was upheld. Keep that in denial, any objection? Okay. Mr. Albert on Stone Ridge Road. Undercarriage damage due to bolts in the ground. Any discussion, Conrad? Council President, I'm sorry.
Listening to. A city solicitor say that he ran over a light. Stanchion base.
Yeah, it was a base on the, on the sidewalk.
He was, he was on the side, he was, he was on the city's. Operating on the city sidewalk, not on the street.
Sounded like when I read the report from Maya, yes.
Okay, all right, that's, that's where I was confused because I don't, I don't know of any light stanchions that are in the street. So if they're not in the street. Then he shouldn't be operating except, you know. On a public way. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Etner on Rice Street. Nail damaged the tire on the Bridge Street bypass. Any discussion, Council Varela?
Oh, sorry, that was, I was raising my hand for discussion of the, the topic that we just passed. Sorry, no worries. I think you chair, I think you chair Riccardi through you, through. Counselor Prusniewski. I did get a chance to review that certain case. And those bolts were clearly on the sidewalk. It seems like, you know, it was basically within the sidewalk where there was a, a brick underlayment. So I could see maybe some confusion, but. There really was no confusion because there was nowhere to park. It seemed like the. Person in the denial was seeking to try to squeeze into a spot that maybe looked like parking. So it was clearly, you know, remain with a denial. Thank you guys, sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just looking to, I think we had that one in the scan documentation. Okay. Back to the nail on the tire on Bridge Street, any discussion? Council President, did you have a question on that one?
I'm sorry, I hadn't, can my hand accidentally raised? I'm all right with that, thank you.
Mr. Perkins on Preston Street where he went ahead and fixed the sidewalk. Thank you for fixing the sidewalk. Any objection to the deny? Okay. Perry on Pittman Street in. Remember, we'll move to remain that in committee, no objection. Tree branch on car parked in front of house with no amount, some at Av. And there was no notice of defect in the tree. Any objection to the doubt, Council President?
Beth, if it's a, if it's a tree. That's on city property and you're parked underneath it and the tree branch falls on your car. The city is not responsible? I'm a little confused here.
No, not unless the tree warden or the city. Had noticed that that tree was defective. So. If the tree looks beautiful and healthy and no one ever called about it, but. You know, the night before there was a windstorm that made that tree. Branch loose and it falls on your car. The status of the law in Massachusetts is you're not, the city's not responsible. Because you don't have notice of the defect in the tree.
Hey, thank you.
I'm trying to recall if that was the date when there was that horrible. Crazy windy storm, if you remember that. Any further questions on? Six four six? There are pictures in the backup deck and the scan documents. Has this there too? Okay. I'm going to note for deny, no objection. Miss Bell on Bradford and Raleigh. Flat tire from large pothole at ninety Av. There was no notice of defect. Council President.
All right, I felt my hand was lowered. My eyes are deceiving me on whether it's up or it's down. I have no comment on that, thank you.
Okay.
There it is.
Another tree one from December first, or the meeting was December first. This was the one where the referral was to National Grid. Any objection to? Denial from the committee? Discussion, if I'm freezing that right? Okay, great. Well, we are up to twenty twenty-two. I feel it. Good progress in forty minutes. Another pothole on Highland Ave. Mia denied, no notice of defect and more than thirty days to file the claim. Any conversation on the deny? Okay, number forty from twenty twenty-two. Hi Jess, there was a tool in the road. Any discussion on denial? Number forty-two from twenty twenty-two. A denial for no notice of defect. Any discussion? Number forty-three was paid, so we just need to vote to discharge. Same for number eighty-four. What you're doing, Excel, okay. Number one twenty-one, clipped an Av, ticket in tow due to storm. Left car on the street while out of the country. Any discussion on the denial? Okay, we will remain in committee, the seven Burnside Street. Twelve First Street, the ticket was dismissed. This will be our first pay. Any discussion on the recommendation to pay? Okay, forty-nine Ward Street, we're to remain in committee while additional research is done. Then eighteen Dalton Perkway. Any discussion on the deny? The ticket was upheld after the hearing. Awesome. Council Cohen.
Thank you Chair Riccardi. I move that we accept all as designated. In column I.
Council Cohen moves that we accept all as designated. Motion or motions in column I, we just reviewed second and by.
Second.
Council Varela? Any discussion? Okay, we will do a roll call vote. Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so motion passes four to zero. Awesome, and. We only have a few remaining on the list. I'm thinking. In the future, we could probably have these in our meetings before council as well, if we keep the list. Good like this, awesome. Well, thank you, everyone. I, I appreciate the swift work. Thank you very much, Beth, for leading us through that for our first claims meeting. It was super helpful. I know for me it was. Awesome, and everyone was able to access the shared Ola folder, okay? So we'll keep that process going forward since the claim numbers are down now. We don't need to ask Maureen to scan five hundred pages of documents. She can just scan them going forward and place them in there and then we will have them accessible for everyone at each meeting. Cool. Is there another motion on the floor? Council Varela?
Motion to adjourn.
Council Varela makes a motion to adjourn second and by. Council President. Roll call vote, Council Cohen?
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so four to zero. We can adjourn.